I'm in a bag spot right now. He's not a voting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the November 6, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Call roll call. Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Mies?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Oaks? Ms. Henderson? And Mr. Ferris?
Here.
Thank you. Let us all stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Arnold, I'm making a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, approval of the agenda passed five to zero. Agenda item number six, Chairman Nomination and Election. Please note that each nomination will require a second. And if there is more than one nomination, each nomination will be voted on in the order that they are made. I will now open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission. And the term or the duration of this chairman's seat will be until the next reorganization meeting in January of 2026. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, I will now open the floor for nominations for the Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission.
Mr. Arnold, I'd like to make a nomination that we nominate Fred Webb from the Westover District as Chairman.
Right, I have a motion to nominate Mr. Webb as Chairman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mies. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, please cast your votes. All right. Mr. Webb's nomination for Chairman of the Planning Commission passed unanimously, five to zero. Mr. Webb, congratulations. If you would, I guess, be seated at the head of the dais. We have the gavel there for you, and turn the meeting now over to you.
I would like to thank my fellow commissioners. I will make every effort to become as good as my predecessors in this role. Feel free to reach out to me at any point in time so we can make this the best we can make it. We've got a lot on our plate going forward with the comprehensive plan and new members. Because congratulations has to go out to Mr. Brown. He'll be leaving us in a couple of months as well, so we'll be having some new members. So, moving on to item seven, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall be limited his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once as a body and not to have any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said session, who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit, shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting absent chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir, we do not.
Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this board about an item that's not on the agenda? All right, the chair is now open for an approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a nomination to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Ms. Mies and a second by Mr. Shelton.
I have no chairman's report, so we will move on to the public hearing phase of the agenda. Pursuant to Article Five, Division Seven of Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County's citizens and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-029. James Murray has petitioned to rezone 6.881 acres located on State Road 672 Pittsville Road in the Stanton River Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the boarding of horses. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, James Murray, is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Murray, is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Murray? Is there anyone here to speak on this case?
No, sir.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Ferris?
I'll make a recommendation that we approve Case R-25029 submitted by James Murray, requesting to rezone 6.881 acres located on State Road 672 Pittsville Road in the Stanton River Election District and showing up tax maps of SGPIN number 2501-19-053 and 2501-086783. This subject property's objection to property is currently zoned A1 Agricultural District, and rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Mies seconds. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-030. Candace and Joshua Spiegel have petitioned to rezone 49.25 acres located on State Road 703 Irish Road in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the harvesting of hay and the construction of a barn dominium. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted, and the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Candace and Joshua Spiegel are here to represent the petition.
Is there anything the Spiegels would like to add? Any commissioners have questions for the Spiegels? Is there anyone here to speak on this case?
No, sir.
Chair is now open for a motion on R-25-030.
Mr. Chairman, on Case R-25-030, Candace and Joshua Spiegel petitioning to rezone from R1 to A1. I move that we recommend that designation for consideration by the Board of Supervisors.
Chair has a first, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown seconds. Please cast your vote. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-031. Linda Rogers has petitioned to rezone 12.39 acres located on State Road 845 Hill Creek Road in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the property to be used for agricultural uses. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Linda Rogers is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Rogers, is there anything you'd like to add? Speak, please step up the microphone and lower it. Please, please lower the microphone. Okay, are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this case?
No, sir.
Chair is now open for a motion on Case R-25-031.
Mr. Chairman, in Case R-25-031, Linda Rogers is requesting to go from R1 to A1. I would like a motion to approve.
Chair has a first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Shelton seconds. Please cast your vote. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-032. Jack and Virginia Thompson have petitioned to rezone 7.22 acres located on State Road 746 Golf Club Road in the Chatham Blair's Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted, and the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jack and Virginia Thompson are here to represent the petition.
The Thompsons, is there anything you would like to add? Are there any questions for the Thompsons? Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, sir.
Mr. Shelton?
Mr. Chairman, in Case R-25-032, I move that we recommend approval for the petition of Jack and Virginia Thompson rezoning the two parcels located on Golf Club Road from R1 to A1.
Chair has a first, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Mies seconds. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-033. Nicholas Madalena has petitioned to rezone 19.23 acres located on State Road 686 Markham Road in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the addition of a manufactured home. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Nicholas Madalena is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Madalena, do you have anything you'd like to add? Or any questions? Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, sir.
Chair is open for a motion on R-25-033.
Mr. Chairman, in Case R-25-033, I make a recommendation that this be approved to the board, that we send it to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Chair has a first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Shelton seconds, please cast your vote. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-034. Beth Ann James has petitioned to rezone 1.995 acres located on State Road 88882 West Sunrise Drive in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a micro resort, retreat center, and event space. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Beth Ann James is here to represent the petition.
Good evening. This is part of a previous request for acreage that was already rezoned to A1, and I appreciate the time in this bifurcated request, so that's all, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. James? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this case?
No, sir.
Chair is now open for a motion on Case R-25-034.
Mr. Chairman, in Case R-25-034, I recommend approving the petition from Beth Ann James rezoning the parcel from R1 to A1.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Mies seconds, please cast your vote. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Arnold?
Case S-25-022. Marshall Kendall Trust and Care of Jonathan Yates has petitioned for a special use permit on 248.72 acres located on State Road 640 Spring Garden Road in the Bannister Election District to allow for a 197-foot monopole-style wireless communications facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yates is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Yates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jonathan Yates, and congratulations on your election. Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank Dave and Sabrina for their help in getting us here tonight. I also have to thank the Kendall family. I've been before this board before. This is another facility, a 197-foot monopole facility for Verizon Wireless. It is also designed for three additional broadband carriers if, oh. Can you hear me now? I'm trying to do a Verizon commercial. It is a 197-foot monopole-style facility, also designed for three additional broadband carriers when and if they want to improve their coverage in the area. Back to my thanks to the Kendall family. We feel that we found the perfect location for this. It works for Verizon. The property in question, as Dave described, is 248 acres. It's right there at the Spring Garden and Kendall Roads. It's the old Shields Farm. Lance's daddy, Marshall, bought the property back in 1973. He farmed it at that time for tobacco and also raised cattle there. Presently, about 125 acres are in cultivation. Dennis Burnett is farming it now, doing tobacco, and he's rotating that with winter wheat. The balance of the property is in planted pines. It laid out just perfectly in that the Kindles were very generous in their placement to us. We were easily able to easily meet all setbacks. We're 836 feet to the front, 1062 rear, 2076 to one side, and then 438 to the other. So, everything laid out. If we're allowed to do this, to describe the future to you, my boss, Mr. Foltz of Arkota Cola Towers is here with us. He will be in charge of the development if this board recommends and later the board approves. It'll take Ryan about sixty days to get this facility up. A lot of that time spent in the foundation setting, the tower itself stacked today. Then Verizon comes in to place their equipment and, to most important part, integrate it with the network and make sure that it's all operational. The facility does not produce any noise, odor, lights, vibration, fumes, or glare. The facility has been approved by the FAA. They made two important findings, determination no hazard to air navigation. Also, it will not require illumination. And that is because the facility is located about, I think it's 8.17 nautical miles from the Danil Regional, and we're over six and a half miles from Buckholler. So, everything came together on this, where Verizon needed to be. It met all the, you know, the federal guidelines and really the Kendall family allowing us to utilize this property. What does it mean for everyone around there? Voice, broadband, access to 911 first responders. You know, in Pennsylvania County, you have reverse 911. Well, it's good as long as they can get the message out on your phone. So, we're hoping, and again, thanks to Dave and Sabrina for their help along the way, and again, to the Kindles. We're hoping that this board will recommend approval. I'm here for any and all questions. We have Mr. Foltz here also for the trickier questions about how you build it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Yates? Has anyone signed up to speak on this case?
No, sir.
All right. Chair is now open for a recommendation on Case S-25-022.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like Verizon has met all the guidelines and has certainly done their homework. And what an asset this will be to that area for better cell service, as he said, broadband, and a lot of services there. and a lot of services there that they don't have presently. So, in Case 5, excuse me, Case S-25-022, I make a recommendation to the BZA that this permit be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Mies, is there a second? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Arnold.
Case S-25-023. SEA Investments LLC in care of William Alderson have petitioned for a special use permit on .5 acres located on State Road 686 Elkhorn Road in the Bannister Election District to allow for a manufactured home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Alderson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Alderson, is there anything you'd like to add?
Okay.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Anyone signed up to speak to this?
No, sir.
Chair will now entertain a motion as regards to Case S-25-023.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any opposition tonight, so therefore, in Case, excuse me, the glare, in Case S-25-023, the SEA Investments by William Alderson, then the special use permit be honored and make a recommendation that the BZA be, that it will be approved by the BZA.
Thank you, Ms. Mies. Chair has a first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Shelton seconds, please cast your vote. Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Arnold.
Case S-25-024. Cindy Reynolds has petitioned for a special use permit on 1.64 acres located on State Road 604 Glade Road in the Stanton River District to allow for a manufactured home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Cindy Reynolds is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Reynolds, anything you'd like to add? Condolences. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ferris.
In Case S-25-024, Cindy Reynolds, a special use permit for a single-wide manufactured home in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code 35-223, I recommend we approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, is there a second?
I second.
Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Arnold.
Case V-25-001. Tim Cassell, Fire Chief of the Bachelors Hall Volunteer Fire Department, has petitioned for a variance on State Road 878 Duncan Drive, a parcel consisting of .621 acres located in the Westover Election District due to a variance for Section 35-388, minimum yard dimensions for the side setback portion of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. The staff summary is included in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Tim Cassell, is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Cassell, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir. Just kind of give you a heads up on what we're trying to do with, you know, with the mega park and everything in that area. We've kind of outgrown our building, and we're looking to add on to it. We do own the lot next door, and the way it is shaped with utility poles and everything else, we just kind of need to change the setback just a little bit off of the property line to accommodate it.
Any questions, Mr. Cassell? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
The chair will now entertain a motion on Case V-25-001.
Mr. Chairman, in Case V-25-001, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the board for a variance of the setback of Code 35-388 to allow for the construction of a pole barn property.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Brown, please cast your vote. Motion passes 5-0. Is there any old business? No, sir. Is there? We got an item under new business, Virginia Outdoors. Mr. Arnold.
Yes, sir. Donna Booth has proposed an open space easement, open space conservation easement for the Virginia Century Farm property. It's located in pretty close proximity to Smith Mountain, which is already a conservation easement that was donated by Appalachian Power Company. The staff summary, including some maps, explain this much further, which are included in the agenda packet. I'm happy to answer any questions with you that you all might have. It's my understanding, and we don't see these very often, but they do come before the planning commission for review and ultimately approval, so.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold?
It's in my area.
Is it? So, is there a motion on the easement?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this be approved and sent to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Mies, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ferris. Please cast your vote.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I believe that conservation easement is approved by this board and not recommended by this board.
Oh. So, Ms. Mies.
Yes.
Ms. Mies's initial motion is, would be correct.
Okay, okay.
Based on the wording of the motion, I believe that the vote can stand as voted. I think, I don't think there's any need to re-vote based on the technical wording of Ms. Mies's motion.
Okay, good deal. Having said that, is that, since we're making the decision, does any commissioner have a desire to change their vote? We're good. All right, before I adjourn, just let me say thank you to my fellow commissioners for covering for the folks that aren't here tonight. It kind of blindsides you for once in a while when you don't, you really pay a lot of attention to your own cases, but not as maybe sometimes as much detail for those that are not yours. But I appreciate your efforts in making my first outing as good as it was. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something before you adjourn. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mies.
To our meetings, our future meetings, and I know you're going to do a great job. You've already proven that as a fellow commissioner. And also, we think we need to welcome Mr. Ferris.
Yeah.
You have our blessings. It's always good to have another team player on the board. And also, just before I left, I heard that Ronald Scares passed away today. I don't know whether y'all had heard it or not.
Had not.
So, I think we need to send our condolences to the Ronald Scares family. He was on the Board of Supervisors for a number of years and served the county well.
Point well taken, Ms. Mies. Anyone have anything to add to that?
Keep Mr. Oaks in your prayers. I heard he had a successful surgery this week. Could you know more than I do, Mr. Williams?
He is, his wife said he's home doing well, but still, based on what happened, he's got a ways to go. And before we adjourn, just the board would like to congratulate Mr. Dalton on his reelection and Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir.
On his election to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
May you do well for the county and its residents.
Yes, sir.
If there's nothing else, we will stand adjourn.
Thank you.